Good evening. Welcome to the October 8th, 2025 Board of Education meeting. We have been in executive session. Can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting at 7:50 PM?
I move.
I'll second.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand up for the pledge. Okay, so we are gonna go straight into the... Oh, no, not yet, sorry. We're gonna go to the president's report. So today, we had the new teacher meet and greet with the Board of Ed before we went into our audit committee meeting. It's been a very busy night. And it was really, all of our board members got sort of put in a group with all the new hires for the district. And we got to answer some questions and go around and, and talk. And one of the things that I wanted to just sort of highlight that I heard in my group, and I'm sure other board members have heard similar things, is that when Mr. Corsilia asked, what is, name a highlight since you've been in Chapakua, and that's only been like a month and change. Everyone was so excited to share. They said only, only two things. And the thing that I kept hearing was that when they got to talk to parents, when either parents reached out or they had to reach out to parents and families, and how they would share that already their child is loving, let's say math, because they've never loved math before. But this year, they seem to have kind of turned around and had a good feeling for math. And I think it was all thanks to the teachers. And it, I think that relationship at the beginning of the year where parents and, and teachers were making connection and understanding that that partnership has to be very strong in order for everyone to be successful was evident. So I, I was loving hearing that. And the second thing that I heard a lot in my group was that how amazing the support system is here in Chapakua, thanks to all of you sitting on to my right, that the administration, the fellow teachers, the, the department chairs, the grade level leaders, just fellow colleagues, were so eager to just answer any question, anything, like where do I go for lunch? To, okay, how can you help me figure out better ways to differentiate learning in my classroom? And I think that, to me, spoke volumes about who we are as a district. And I was very proud to hear that. So I just wanted to share that with everybody. Does anybody have anything they want to share from the meet and greet?
It was really fun and so nice to meet all the teachers who were so excited to be here and echoed very similar things in my group about how much collaboration they felt in the building, how supportive and welcoming everyone, the PD lifts, just all the things that we almost take for granted, but other districts are not doing the way we're doing. And all these new teachers really felt the change from the various places they had come from and, and were so excited to be here because already had such great positive vibes and we're really happy to be here.
I felt the same way. It was, it was actually a lot of fun. The group I spoke to, they all really spoke about like how much they love the kids already and how like lucky they feel to be teaching our children. And that was, you know, I, good job.
Good job.
Okay, so the other thing, we've been very busy. We've had a work session this past week. And it will be on video. We are now starting to tape our work sessions. And it was basically coming together to try to have conversations about drafting, redrafting our mission statement. Because the last time it was revised was in 1991. And with two new board members and being that it's been 34 years, I think it was time. So we did that and we started it. And we are going, we came up with some good thoughts and ideas and we're gonna get some feedback and then we're gonna come back to it. We also started talking about committee charges, which are like committee goals and what the purpose of the committees are. And these are Board of Ed committees. All of our committees have become committees of the whole, which means that it is opened up to all five members of the Board of Education. And, and we are going to just recommit ourselves to the different roles and responsibilities, the membership, the frequency of meetings, and what the goals and purposes are for each of those committees. So we started that conversation as well. And we are going to, we are in progress. We are not done, but we are in progress. And I think, I think we made, we did a good job in starting the conversation and getting some ideas put on paper. We also just came back from a board retreat yesterday. We had a board retreat and we, it was a lot of time of learning, connecting, team building, getting to know one another, learning from each other, learning about how each member communicates, the learning styles, everyone's teaching styles. We had a homework assignment where all board members had to come prepared to share a how-to. So how-to, whatever your lesson was going to be. Mine, I will just share mine. Mine was how to play Kung Ghee, which is a Korean version of Jaxx. For those of you who saw certain movie out there, I have not seen it, but I heard that they played it in that movie. But that's what I taught my board members and the superintendent. Others have done other things. You guys could talk about your own if you would like. You don't have to. So it, it was a great time. We were able to go and have session on, with our legal counsel on some legal matters and professional learning around that. And so it was, it was, I think, a very much needed time for all of us. And I'm kind of sad that it's over because it could have been longer. We also had the middle school and the high school open houses. Now it just seems like so long ago, but they, they all went really well. You can feel the energy and in all of the buildings and how people were, families were excited in coming into the campus and visiting the classrooms and meeting the teachers and understanding how they can partner with the district. Okay, and that is all for the president's report.
All right, hi, everybody. Thank you so much. So the past couple of weeks, I've been able to meet with all six student governments from each of the six respective schools. And it was really interesting and just overall awesome to see how each of the student government will be run this year. At school, some of them are running a little bit differently, but overall, they're very similar with similar goals and just are really looking forward to getting to working with the entire student bodies at their schools. And so at the elementary schools, I was, their student governments are not set up just yet there. That's incoming in the next couple, next few weeks. And I was, the student government advisors were really excited about the, like I said, the goals this year and getting their fourth grade, getting their fourth graders leaders in the student government. And overall, they have, they have many, many things they want to achieve this year, including they want to, they want to have the students have a talent show and lead the safety patrol. And at Roaring Brook, they have a program called Tiny Teachers where the fourth grader is able to help out in the kindergarten classrooms at different points during the school day, which I think is super awesome. And that they want to continue that at Craftland and West Orchard. And the street, and then there's Spirit Week that they will help, that students will plan. And also leading town hall meetings with larger school communities, which allows for the student government members to get public speaking experience within the, within their, within their school community. But also having the student governments learn, speak to, directly to other students. And they really emphasize the fact that peer-to-peer communication is so, super important and that students will more, will more, more, are more likely to listen to their peers and the other students. And then maybe an administrator or teacher who would, who would be talking to them during these meetings. So I thought that was really interesting and really awesome to see. So events slash update and updates that are gonna, that are going on. We have trunk or tree within the next couple of weeks at all the elementary schools, Bus Safety Week, and then continuing events for new students and new student ambassadors, which is awesome to see that continuing. And like I said, clubs begin, clubs begin next week. And there will also be a elementary presentation to the Board of Education, I believe, at the next meeting, which is awesome. For the student government at the middle schools, there is two eighth grade student leaders, Dylan at what, Seven Bridges and Genesis at Bell. And I was really impressed by their work ethic and their determination to make sure that their student government will be run effectively. And they seem to be really excited and it was awesome meeting with them. There will be appointed positions within the student governments at the schools to keep, to give leadership roles and just overall makes student government the best place that it can possibly be. And some goals that they have are planning a pumpkin decorating contest during advisory periods to, within each of the advisories at the middle schools. And they want to continue their October and Thanksgiving spirit weeks. And then something that Bell did last year was do a food drive at Mount, at the Mount East School Food Pantry. And they want to collaborate with all of the middle school clubs this year to kind of get everybody involved. And they also want to collaborate with each other. Dylan and Genesis were discussing how they want to collaborate, their two student governments together to kind of talk about their goals individually and how one student government can help another. And it was really great to see. And then they were also gonna get, get surveys from student government, from the student body to student government to gain the input and feedback for their, for their club. And so some events and updates for the middle schools. Clubs began last week. There's a back to school celebration at Seven Bridges, which is always fun. I remember going to that while I was there. There's two field trips that are coming up, the eighth grade field trip to New York City and the fifth grade field trip to T-10 Reservation. And I heard a lot about them utilizing their steam center and hydroponics labs. At the steam center, there seemed to be, the students were building recess equipment, like cornhole, to use at recess, which I thought was pretty great to, pretty great to see. And utilizing their academic opportunities to help them and, help them for recess, which was awesome. And they're utilizing their hydroponics lab, lots of plants being planted. And fifth graders are, have really taken a liking to the hydroponics labs, it seems. And then at the high school, I was able to meet with our student body president, Warren, and our student, student body vice president, Mary, who obviously had their campaigns at the end of last school year and are really looking forward to this school year and what their student, and what student government really can do. And this, and a couple of weeks ago, we had the Homecoming Week Nitro Ball Tournament, which they said was awesome. They had 45 kids with nine different teams. And it seemed to be very successful. And they're looking to planning a Halloween event and a spring event, a spring event, which would be trivia. And their overall goals for this, for this school year to increase student engagement overall and to increase family engagement K through 12. So having some of these events that they're planning to be not only really families and really students, but to gather from the others, from the other schools as well. That was pretty great to see. And they also want to highlight student success. They brought up doing, they brought up possibly doing a winter club recruitment or club showcase to kind of keep showing off the club, the amazing club that we had. And then just once, one event that we had today was our narrative coordinating advisory. It was the first time that our, that our advisories had done this. And this, and this was this morning. So I'm coming straight, I'm coming from today. And it was really great to make connections with our, with our peers just individually. We were, we were in pairs and we would hear personal stories from them. Obviously, if you were comfortable sharing. And it, it was, it really was a very, very good community bonding and overall making us each other, making us closer with the students in our advisories that we don't necessarily know all that well. And it was really great to see. And then, I don't know too much about this just because I'm not a senior. And this was just told to me yesterday or two days ago. But there are senior passes now where seniors can now take other seniors off campus with them. If Dr. Ackerman or Ms. Huang want to speak a little bit more on that, but...
It was well received.
I'm sure.
But overall, things are doing well at the high school, middle school.
Thank you, Matthew. Um, well, wait, so I appreciate you allowing me to elaborate a little bit on these senior car passes. So we, you know, we have changed the structure in the front. And so some of the students had advocated that, you know, before the campus was open for all, seniors were able to go freely off in campus in others' cars. So we just had to come up with a structure that made sense. So all of our seniors got orange ID cards and are now able to, we, change, head out for lunch with other students driving in their cars. And so that's going back to a previous practice that we had. But we have a more controlled way of doing that to make sure that only the upper, upperclassmen or seniors are leaving campus in that way. So it's a good shift.
Dr. Ackerman, if I could just ask for clarification. The younger students at the high school can still walk off?
Yes.
But they can, it's just about driving in a car?
Yep. And so I, I think it's a credit to Dr. Seppi working with the students to try to find a way to get to a place where everyone feels comfortable and safe. So, right. So in terms of the community update, our first slide is celebrating Board Appreciation Week. So this, it's actually not this week, it's next week. But we don't have a meeting next week. So I just want to take this opportunity to recognize the hard work, dedication and leadership of our board members. Your commitment to our students, staff and our, our whole community shapes the future of our schools. And thank you for the countless hours you've given service. But what that service looks like takes many forms. Champions for our children, critical friends to the administrators navigating tough challenges, coaches supporting parents through a variety of issues. And as innovative thinkers, expanding our programs to meet the needs of an ever-evolving community. Your advocates, your advocates for so many who may have the difficulty finding their voice. And now we have our very own student representative, who represents all the children in our district, from the ones who are just learning how to tie their shoes to those preparing to figure out their next steps after graduation in June. We are deeply grateful for all of you to have such an exceptional group of leaders who put our students at the center of every decision. Your leadership lights the way for a brighter future. And it's a privilege to sit alongside you as we work together on behalf of all of our students. And so now I'd like to welcome our PTA president, Sudha Kumar, who also has a few words on behalf of our parents.
Thank you for the opportunity. So hi, my name is Sudha Kumar. I'm here on official PTA business. For those who are listening and watching us, as Dr. Ackerman mentioned, next week is Board Appreciation Week. On behalf of the entire Chapakua PTA, I would like to extend our profound gratitude and appreciation as we celebrate your recognition week next week. We're also very thankful for your leadership and dedication as a member of the CCSD Board of Education. Your commitment sets the tone for the entire district. This commitment, we recognize, extends far beyond regular business meetings. It's reflected in your visible presence at so many school events, your willingness to meet with parents and educators, and your tireless work in ensuring the long-term fiscal health and educational excellence of the Chapcoa Central School District. Your efforts provide the stable foundation that allows our students and faculty to thrive. We appreciate the enthusiastic and thoughtful caring you demonstrate every day in making difficult decisions and advocating on behalf of our children. We understand that your decisions often involve balancing competing priorities, diverse community needs and complex regulatory requirements. That thoughtful, deliberate approach you take in this governance, prioritizing the well-being and the future of every student, is truly commendable. It is this clear focus on our children's success from supporting vital academic programs to ensuring safe and healthy learning environment makes us, Chapakua PTA, so proud to partner with you. We in the PTA look forward to continuing our work together to make CCSD an exceptional place to learn and grow. Thank you once again for your selfless service to our children and our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, including Matt. Now I'd like to welcome Tani Galper to come and distribute a token of appreciation to our board members. And also my PTA friends who are here, so please join.
Okay, great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. No, thank you. Thank you, everybody. This is a, it's, it's such a tremendous undertaking to be a part of, like the Board of Education and to support the entire community. So on behalf of all of us, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna continue on. So Josh, can you please share with the community?
Sure.
Resolution on the agenda?
Yeah, so there is a resolution on the agenda for a contract with NYSERDA and Wendell Engineering. They are performing both a electric bus engineering study that is funded through NYSERDA and Wendell and Arbosi's. As well as, as part of that is the beginning of a, of a reusable energy study. So determining where solar power can go as part of the study for, for electric buses in there. And then coming later on, once they complete this study, NYSERDA is gonna be funding a full evaluation of energy of our school district in there. This came out of both the Facilities Committee and our zero emissions bus group that both are gonna have meetings coming up where these, this information will be presented at both of those committees and then as well to the Board of Education once everything is complete, probably in the middle of the year. It's been a pretty comprehensive study of our space so far. And they're continuing to do a really deep dive into our spaces of where zero emissions buses can go and where renewable energy can provide a resource to the school district.
Thank you, Josh. I also wanted to just highlight for families who may not have seen it in the week. We received some feedback from our middle schools that our parents need more help navigating Canvas. So we do have multiple sessions that our parents would be able to take a part of if they need like a little tune-up on Canvas or they're new users for the first time. So feel free to join one of our webinars. And I'm sure we'll send a recorded version out at some point during, during the following week. We do have a number of things happening between now and our next visit that we wanted, next visit, that our next meeting that we wanted to highlight. So I do want Adam to talk a little bit about our, our next tri-state visit.
Great, thank you. Hello, good afternoon, evening. So tri-states, for those of you that aren't familiar with the tri-states consortium is a consortium of schools in the tri-state area, generally high-performing school districts. We've been a member of tri-states for many years. And part of the power of tri-states is they put together these teams. And every two years, districts host a visit. And then in the off years, we have an opportunity to send members of our team to other school districts. And it basically is a critical friends network. So we have a team of about 20 educators coming on October 22nd, 23rd, 24th to help us further study our literacy program K through four. So we've developed these essential questions up here on the top right. The first question says, team is going to come into the district and through examining various documents, visiting our classrooms, speaking with kind of focus groups, they're going to focus on question one, which is about to what extent do our current literacy classroom practices align with our district literacy philosophy? So does our philosophy aligned with what's actually happening in our classrooms? And then the second question focuses on the New York State Literacy Brief, which, or briefs which outlined what they refer to as high-impact literacy practices. So we're asking them to what extent they're seeing those high-impact literacy practices. The hope is that they will, you know, highlight some things that we're doing really well and identify any gaps that we might have. You can see the schedule there on the left side, just a general overview. Day one, the morning is a welcome, some framing around the question. We provide some resources and materials for them, some documents for them to review. And then they spend the afternoon of the first day, as well as the bulk of the second day, visiting our elementary schools, moving into classrooms. And then the third day, they do kind of a report-out fishbowl where we're all invited to hear about their findings. And then they do an administrative debrief. They follow this visit with a report that we in the, historically, we've presented back, shared with the board and also posted on the website. So, you know, has kind of their findings in the form of a report. So this comes a couple of years after we did our original literacy review with outside consultants. We've made some changes since then. So we think it's a good time for them to come and give us some feedback.
Our past visits since I've been here have focused on special education and our STEAM progression K through 12. And then Adam's been working with the CCT on shaping our parent-teacher conferences. And I know he had sent out a letter today to our families. So we just wanted to highlight, you know, our thinking around how we're going to launch this with, for the first time, with the understanding that we're asking for patience as we try to do this in a way that makes sense for both our parents and our faculty. So go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a lot of text on this slide. I'm not going to read it all, but I did want to memorialize it and have it in one place. All this text comes from a letter that I sent this, this morning. It was kind of delivered to you based on your preferences in Parents' Square. So some of you might have gotten it this evening, but it's in your, should be in your email. And it describes our parent-teacher conference process now K-12. So the parents will have the opportunity to sign up for parent-teacher conferences K-12. You can see the dates there. November 3rd is an early dismissal. That's noted on the district calendar. And then the afternoon will be reserved for parent-teacher conferences. We'll also have evening conferences. So parents can sign up for evening conferences with their teachers on the 3rd. And then the 4th, we have a superintendent conference day. No students in school, but we'll have conferences for that full day. And we're expanding opportunities at the elementary school. So parents can sign up not only with their elementary teacher, but also with others. So special teacher, specials teachers, for example, the school psychologist, even the school nurse, we'll have service providers, et cetera. So if you, if parents would like to meet with any of those folks, they can sign up for conferences at the elementary level. And then at this, we've had done conferences historically through sixth grade. We had added fifth and sixth and did a few different iterations of what that looks like based on feedback from faculty and parents. Here, we've, we've brought our fifth through 12th grade model into kind of alignment. And so parents will be able to sign up for parent-teacher conferences there. We're going to have a two-phase signup process. October 22nd will be the date that conferences are open to everyone. There are going to be some families that teachers will reach out to ahead of time, some, some families that they definitely do want to meet with. So there'll be some kind of, you know, priority or preferred meetings based on like a need to meet first. And then we'll, you know, schedule a few of those into slots. But the, for the bulk of our families, October 22nd will be the day. I think we said three o'clock. Additional information will be coming from the building principals about all the details of the times and how long the slots will be and how to sign up and things like that.
Okay. Okay, and then of course, we have our superintendent conference day. So you could just get a flavor for some of the, for the structure of the day. So we're gonna have a keynote that's gonna focus on AI technology. And then we'll have choice sessions presented by our staff. Or we have some guest presenters coming in with some specific content expertise. And then we have opportunities for our faculty to meet in learning teams across the district. So once we come together again at the second meeting in October, we'll share with you the schedule of events that we had that day. So, but it promises to be an exciting day for our, for our faculty and staff. So that is the end of the superintendent's report. We have a lot happening between now and our next meeting. And so we encourage our, our families to get involved, to come to our events, to come to our parent coffees, to come to our cultural celebrations. And we look forward to being able to welcome our families as we plan forward for this new opportunity to have parent-teacher conferences, both at the secondary level and at night. So we're excited for what lies ahead. And now I'm gonna transition over to Josh, who's going to introduce our auditors. And I'm gonna make my way over to him and give him the clicker.
Can I, Dr. Ackerman, can I just say one thing? I just want to thank the district and the teachers, the district administrators and the teachers on providing that K through 12. I'm not sure if I know of another district that provides K to 12 parent-teacher conferences, but this is just a show of the district's commitment to say how important it is for, how important it is to our district that we partner with our families in our children's learning experiences. And I, I just wanted to say thank you so much for, for doing that and thank the teachers as well.
Thank you, Kelly. We appreciate that. It's gonna be great. Okay, Josh.
Thanks. So today we have Scott Oling, our external auditor our external auditor from PKF O'Connor-Davies, who's going to present our external audit results. He presented at the Audit Committee today. And this will be a condensed version of that presentation. And then, have time for the board to ask some questions if they have additional questions.
Thank you, Josh. Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Scott Oling. I'm the partner with PKF O'Connor-Davies. I'm joined here in the back by Samantha Nardo, who was the manager onsite, ran the audit at the district this summer. So what we're gonna go over, I have about 10 slides here. What we're gonna go over is just some required communications that an auditor and it, and their client must, you know, have. And then, I'm gonna focus most of the discussion on what happened in the School District's General Fund, which is the fund that the voters vote upon every year, authorizing the district to spend the funds that the voters authorize. And then, at the end, we'll touch upon the management letter, which are comments where we brought up discussions of any minor deficiencies that we found in conducting the audit. So our responsibilities, as relates to the annual external audit that the district is required to have, what we primarily deliver is a full audit report that's about 70, 80 pages long. But the only part that belongs to us is the independent auditor's report. There are two independent auditor reports in your financial statements. The first one, we've provided you something that's called an unmodified opinion, which is also known as a clean opinion. It basically says that we believe the financial statements and the numbers that we're about to go over fairly present what happened in the district for the year. And there's also an opinion known as a yellow book opinion. That's an opinion on your compliance with internal controls, making sure that the systems you have in place are generating numbers that, that, that can be relied upon. I've put in, read something that normally is also issued at the same time as the audit report. But unfortunately, the federal government and the Federal Office of Management and Budget has not finalized the compliance supplement for 2025 that provides us the information that we need in order to make sure you're complying with the federal dollars that the district gets. Normally, that's issued in the spring each year. It's still in draft form. So we are prohibited from issuing that report yet. As soon as that becomes final, we'll be able to issue a report. We've done the work already. We just cannot issue the report. We've also issued an extra classroom activities report for all the extracurricular activities that go on in the district. And we'll go over the communications letter that we provided to you on, on some of our findings. We worked very well with Josh and the finance team this summer. We had no difficulties doing the audit. We didn't really have any adjustments to, to make to the numbers that were provided to us and didn't have any disagreements. This process actually started back in June. The main work continued in the summer in July. And then, we're kind of on hold for the next thing I haven't read here, because we had to wait on New York State to give us pension information. Keeps coming out later and later each year. This year, it didn't come out till September 8th. They originally promised it would be out in July, and that never happens. Your responsibilities, as the board and the oversight for the district, is to make sure that you've implemented appropriate accounting policies, that you have provided us numbers that fairly present what happened to the district financially in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. I mentioned before about the internal controls. It's your responsibility to make sure that they are as effective as can be. You have numerous financial laws to comply with, both at the state level, federal level, and that you have to provide us all financial records that we request as part of the audit. Otherwise, there would be what's known as a scope limitation, and we would not be able to give you a clean opinion if you didn't provide us the information that we asked for. So now, one of the more important slides is what happened. So this is the General Fund. And the top part of the page shows the revenues that you asked for to help support your operations. The budget estimated about $138 million in revenues coming into the district. And you could see in the third column, the actual results. The district took in just over $140 million. So in the fourth column, the variance, you did about $2.3 million better than budget. The property tax number comes in basically on budget, because the town has to make you whole for what you've asked for. And obviously, property taxes are the largest revenue source supporting your budget. But also, state aid supports just under 10% of your budget. And then, some of the other items in there are various non-state, non-property tax-type things. In the middle of this page, the expenditure's what you spend the money on and what the voters authorized you to spend when they approved the budget for the year. You originally thought you were gonna spend about $139 million, and that covers, you know, pretty much everything, from salaries to employee benefits, to debt service costs to fund all the capital projects you're doing, and then, various operating costs, fuel, electricity, or all the things that it costs to operate the district. So the budget, again, estimated somewhere around $140 million. And you could see your actual spending came in at about $137.3 million. So you ended up with savings of about $2.9 million on this, on the expenditure side of the budget, which is about 2% of your overall budget. So when you come down to the very bottom of this page, you anticipated in the original budget that you would actually spend $3.5 million more than you were gonna take in in revenues. But you have to adopt a balanced budget. And so, what you did was you said, "Hey, we have fund balance or savings from previous years. We'll use that to balance our plan." That was modified during the year by board action to about an estimate that you would use $4.5 million. The good news for the district is, in the actual column, the third number up, not only did you not use fund balance or dip into it, but you actually added just over $2 million to your fund balance. Your fund balance started with $19.4 million. And so, you ended the year, as you could see, with a total fund balance or savings account, as you, you know, you can refer to it as, as $21.4 million. This is a very important page. So this is the snapshot of the finances of the district, known as a balance sheet, as of June 30th. And that $21 million number that we just saw on the previous slide is the second number up from the bottom. Fund balance is basically the difference between your assets and your liabilities. At the top of the page, the district had assets primarily in cash and investments and some other receivables, totaling about $31.9 million at the end of the year, on June 30th. The liability section, right after that, you had $10.4 million in liabilities, with the majority of that being monies owed to the state retirement systems and primarily the teachers' retirement system. The retirement system, you submit all the salary information to them at the end of the year of what you paid all the teachers and the other certified staff. And they send you a bill, which this year was basically about 10% of the certified staff salaries. And that's an obligation that you pay to the retirement system in the fall each year. So what's left, the difference between the assets and liabilities, is that $21 million. But you could see there are many buckets in this fund balance. The first group or the first subtotals there of fund balance is about $12 million. And those are what are known as restricted fund balance components. So all of these items in restricted fund balance are set up under state general municipal law or education law. But none of these can exist without board approval. So you operate under that umbrella. And what you've set up at the end of this year is you've set aside, out of the $21 million in fund balance, $1.4 million to deal with any pending tax sorcery cases for businesses or homeowners who are protesting their assessed value on their properties and get, get it approved by court order and get their taxes reduced. And you have to refund the difference. So you have money set aside for that. You have $2.6 million set aside in employee benefit accrued liability. That's essentially a reserve to fund any vacation or sick time that would be owed employees. If people retire, leave the district, then they have to be paid out. This is the pot of funds where tho, those monies could come from. You have $3.3 million set aside for the employees' retirement system, not the teachers' retirement system. And this is to help fund, if there's a spike in contribution rates, if the stock market performs badly and the state retirement system increases your contribution rates, you would be able to, to go to this pot instead of trying to raise additional taxes from residents. You have money in a future capital projects reserve of $1 million. This would be used towards, you know, any future projects. This was a reserve that the voters approved for you to establish. And the voters will ultimately also have to vote to take money out of this reserve for whatever capital project that you're using. But right now, there's a million in that. And then, you have a big amount in a debt service reserve, $3.1 million. And that was increased substantially this year, because on the monies that you borrowed this year, you did very well in the market for the folks who wanted to buy your bonds. And they provided you a sizable premium on what they paid for that debt. And you got, I think, just over $1 million for that. So that money did come into the General Fund, but it gets parked in this debt service reserve and must only be used to help offset your future debt service, your principal and interest that you pay each year on those borrowings. So overall, that's about the $12 million in, in fund balance. You then have monies assigned in fund balance for what's known as encumbrances. Those are purchase orders that were open at the end of the year and just have to get rolled over and paid off in the current year. And then, what you did also in the, when you adopted the '25, '26 budget that you're in right now, you gave back essentially $2.5 million of property tax relief to all the residents and businesses in the school district. Because when you adopted the budget, your, this budget, you plan on actually spending $2.5 million more than you're gonna take in. So you would have either had to cut spending $2.5 million, increase property taxes an additional $2.5 million, or something in between. So this was the policy decision. And you'll see on a, on another slide, the district has relied less and less on this to balance its spending plan. So what that leaves out of $21 million is that last number, the unassigned, of $5.7 million. Unassigned fund balance in a New York school district is not allowed to be more than 4% of the next year's budget. So your 5.7 is at that max. Can't be more than that. Can be less. But, so that puts you in a very good financial position, 'cause you have the maximum amount. You could have an unassigned fund balance, plus you have all these other amounts that you've restricted for these specific purposes. Just to wrap things up, the management letter comments that, that I referenced earlier are really very minor. I would call them ticky-tack things, but we needed something to put in the letter. So that, this is what we came up with. In your special purpose fund, there were just a couple of scholarship and memorial funds that didn't have current-year activity. We just asked that these things be looked at. If, if the purpose is, is no longer appropriate, then, you know, the funds can be moved for another purpose. In your special aid fund, which is a grant fund, that's where most of the, the federal and some of the state grants are. One of the problems that you and all school districts have is collecting from New York State, not surprisingly. They, they put a lot of hurdles in the way of paying you for your, what's known as the summer program for handicapped students. So you are still owed about $273,000 for the summer '22 and '23 programs combined. But Josh and his team, you know, are constant communication with the state. The state is just very slow in giving out money. Cash receipts, just some small things about documenting dates of, of, of certain checks. And then, there was just one issue in the extra classroom activity funds regarding the High School Orchestra Club. And it just, the, the amount wasn't deposited timely because the check was put in the wrong drawer somewhere, I guess, at the high school. And then, when it was found, it was obviously deposited. And then, just last, last slide. The school district has a AAA rating. That is highly unusual. The rating agencies have become much tougher the last few years. And they don't give out AAA ratings. They, they really don't. So for you guys, to, to be at this level is, is very impressive. And what that really means is you have capital projects coming up on the horizon. You're gonna go out and borrow substantial amounts of money through bonds. And by having a AAA rating, you're gonna get, pay a lower interest cost on that. So, you know, that's fantastic. And then, the other thing that I mentioned earlier, you did use $2.5 million of fund balance, but that's $228,000 less than you used last year. The district has been on a good path of reducing its reliance on using fund balance to balance its spending plan. It means you're really closer to adopting a truly balanced budget and not, you know, using appropriated fund balance, your savings account to balance. So, you know, and then, as you manage the budget and your revenues come in better than you estimate or your expenses come in lower than you estimate, that will help also replenish and, and add to fund balance. That is basically my presentation. And so, yep, that was it. So I'd be glad to take any comments or questions.
I think I asked, I think we all asked the questions earlier. I don't wanna just be performative, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh, for working together and for being able to present us a really fantastic audit.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, so we'll, we will move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? The Policy Committee. We have two policies on the agenda. And we, there was, I think, four of us there at the Policy Committee. We can, do you wanna just talk about it when we get to that? On the agenda? Is that okay? Is that okay with everyone? Okay. Any other committee report? I don't think we've really started the full, right? They're all coming up at the end of October.
We did have Sports Boosters last night.
Oh, okay.
So tonight, tonight's Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund meeting happening, like, simultaneously. So unfortunately, we're not able to be there tonight. But I did, I was able to attend last night the Sports Boosters meeting. And Sports Boosters is off to a great start. They're planning some new events. Last year, they were not able to do their Booster Bash, but this year, they are going to do that. And so invitations will be going out soon. And they're really excited this year for just in general, increasing membership levels for all the different teams, for boosters. And if any given sports team has 75% of their families belonging to Sports Boosters, then they can apply for a grant to get some extra things for their teams, whether it be equipment or special clinics and that kind of thing. So they're really hoping this year to put a big focus on the boosters and get all of our athletic families to hopefully join and support. So that's exciting. And as I mentioned briefly, tonight is the Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund meeting. And they also have a number of events coming up. Spelling B on November tenth, I believe, is the next one. And then their winter ball in January, their spring benefit, the senior musical they support. So they've got a lot of great plans for this year as well. So try to support all of our groups and CSF. Did they have a meeting, CSF?
So we talked a little bit about the innovation committee. We talked about some of the projects that have been worked on, like the World Economics Learning Lab. The grant window for the grants is now open. So we're putting that in the bulletin for faculty. They approved their first Instagram of the year, which went to Jenny Giris at Seven Bridges, which wasn't surprising. She has written quite a few grants through the years. So that was for some AV technology, some lapel mics and things like that for some of the video work that they do over at Seven Bridges. I know that they have one pending Instagram that just came in. So they're, you know, they're up and running. They did talk a little bit about some other fundraising events that they're kind of brainstorming for. So that was the gist of the meeting.
Lapel mics. I think they have the ones they put over their heads, too, like that come out like this.
Yeah, they might. I, they, they, um.
I don't know what they're called.
We've had some struggle when we have a lot of students working on creating video at the same time that the, without some kind of microphone technology, you pick up a lot of background noise. So they find that some of the, some of the options, whether it's the headset mic or the lapel mic, depending on what they're trying to record, is a better option.
Thank you. Okay. We will move to public comment. We welcome public comments. And in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion among themselves regarding comments presented. Do we have anybody for public comment? Okay, no one is here for public comments. Okay, moving on to item number three, approvals and ratification. May I have a motion for three point one? To accept the minutes of the September seventeen, twenty twenty five board meeting?
I'll move.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Three point two, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the October first, twenty twenty five work session?
I'll move.
Second?
I will second.
All in favor? Item three point three, that is the policy. And we are going to have the first reading of that. Dr. Ackerman?
So we, we had discussed in the policy meeting, our first policy was the elementary and secondary curriculum development instructional materials, particularly the section about when a student or a parent or caretaker has a complaint. The first step is to bring that to the classroom teacher. And so we wanted to formalize that process. We wanted to signal to the complainant that the the teacher may consult with some, with their colleagues when reviewing the complaint and that there needs to be clarity around the decision based on whether or not they were going to make an adjustment. So we put some language in there that would require the faculty member to respond to the complaint in writing. So we wanted to formalize the process a little bit more within this policy. And then do you want to do the, since we don't have, it's not like a, do you want me to do the next one?
Yes, and then three point four is policy ninety seventy.
So this one is for our staff. And so we wanted to make some adjustments to our recording workplace conversations policy, really making it clear that when employees are meeting with each other or in administrative meetings with their supervisors, they're not permitted to record those conversations. So we made some adjustments to this, just so that was very, very clear to all of our staff. So those are the two recommended adjustments for the first readings. People have feedback, they should send it to Kaylee, the chair of the policy committee meeting. Me, maybe the full boards, and so many of the board members now go to the policy committee meetings. And then we will look at it at our next policy committee meeting if we receive any feedback. If not, then we will likely put them on for a second reading and adoption at a future meeting.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to item four, recommended action.
I recommend four point one instructional as presented. There's no voting on first readings.
I'm sorry.
Ready?
Yes.
Lisa, are we ready? Okay, I recommend four point one instructional as presented.
I will move four point one as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor?
I recommend four point two non-instructional as presented.
We have a motion.
I will move four point two as presented.
I'll second.
Any questions? Comments? Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Item five, recommended action. Use of the consent agenda permits of the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the superintendent of schools. So does anybody want to remove anything off the consent agenda? No? Nope, okay. So can I take all these together? Okay. So may I have a motion to move items five point one all the way through? Five point one nine.
I'll move.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions, discussions? I have some, I think, would be beneficial for all to hear. If there's some on here, like for the five point one five, the RFP, Mr. Block, for the request for proposal. How do we, how do we come to that conclusion?
So we put out an RFP for fundraising services. And we had formed a committee with the CSF and the sports boosters to discuss and review all of the responses to that RFP. When we reviewed it, we realized that those were not the services that the district needed at that time. So the responses, none of the responses matched the need of the school district. So we rejected all of the responses to that. We reformulated and then transmitted that to the committee to now put out a new RFP for fundraising services that better match the goals of the school district.
And Tim and Alyssa are on our.
Yes. I also then wanted to ask about five point one eight. Like, could you just explain really briefly how the the bidding process and the rejecting of the bids, and then how the rebidding process all works?
Sure. So for a bid different than our RFP, we put out a, a package that has specific services that the district is looking to have completed. In this case, it's painting services. There are specific rules and requirements for that. When someone puts a bid package together, that include insurance limits. And it also includes prevailing wage rates that need to match New York State Department of Labor. And so in my office, Annie and our purchasing, we review all of those together once we open the bids and verify whether they match the legal limits that we adhere to. In this case, we received two bids, and neither of them met the correct prevailing wage rates. And one of them, I believe, didn't have the correct insurance requirement. So we don't have any viable bids. So we need to reject both of those respondents. And then we need painting services. So we're going to put that out again with some additional language to see if maybe that was what some of the misunderstanding was with the bidders in there so that we could get bids that adhere to New York State purchasing laws.
So when that gets all straightened out, are they allowed to rebid for the, to the same project?
Yes, they are allowed to rebid for the same project.
And then just one more, five point one nine?
This is as part of when we purchase, whether it's trucks or vans, we purchase those through our BOSIs. And Nassau BOSIs is the one that does the bidding for our region for all automobiles, whether it's trucks, vans, club cars that we would use for athletics. So we need to have then a cross contract with them with our BOSIs. So this is approving our participation in the Nassau BOSIs bidding process.
Okay. It, is there a reason why, does our BOSIs do not provide these services? Is that why we're using the Nassau BOSIs?
Yeah, our BOSIs doesn't provide purchasing of vehicle services. So we cross with Nassau on that.
And so when you do a cross contract, our BOSI superintendent has to sign off on it?
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number six, be it resolved that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the following contracts. We don't, do we have any? No, we don't have any. Okay. Under facilities, number seven, we have seven point one, which is a change order. Because they are now charging us a dollar more? Okay. Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of change orders approved by the superintendent per board resolution adopted at the June fourteen, twenty seventeen Board of Education meeting. And it's with Neighbor Electric Core. I'll move that. I'll move seven point one. May I have a second?
I will second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, notice of future meetings. Wednesday, October twenty ninth, seven P M, we will have the elementary school presentations in the academic commons. And then after that, it is November twelfth, twenty twenty five. At seven P M, we will have the middle school presentations at the academic commons. Do you think we will need to move to the auditorium for those presentations?
No, because I think we'll probably move out of here to like a, like a workstation for the kids because they're going to be doing writing.
Okay. So may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight fifty one P M?
I move.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.